This is for the, for the review. Do you need me on the mic or no mic? Okay. Okay, good morning, everyone. Okay, it is Tuesday, June seventeenth, it's nine o'clock, we're in the multi-purpose room one thirteen. And we are here for our um rescheduled work session. We do have the pledge of allegiance, so if you'll please join and stand and face the law. Honestly, thank you. Okay, we do have four things on the agenda today for our work session. We do not have anyone joining via web acts yet, I think we will have at least one commissioner joining via web acts. The first thing is the San Miguel lift station. And we have our assistant county manager Lopez presenting.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. As you are aware, there has been a request uh pending now for over a year. For extension of wastewater lines in the San Miguel area. To hook up a church that is in that location uh to provide them wastewater service. Uh as you're also aware, we had a bill passed in the state legislature earlier this year. That will take effect next month. That will allow us to invest public tax dollars to support infrastructure development for private entities. This will be the very first uh facility that might benefit from that. And therefore, we've got a lot of little details we need to work out. Number one is uh we need guidance from the board on whether we should hook up the church. Uh if that is indeed something that the board wants to do. And if we do hook up the church, if we should also build the system. To be able to hook up additional houses that are further down the street. And then the, the final question will be, how would you like us to fund this? Because it would not be able to be uh funded through any type of bonding. Where we would be able to uh use revenue because the revenue would not be sufficient to pay off a bond. So, any thoughts, discussion, comments, and direction are appreciated.
You got it. Okay, so this is my district and this was one of the requests that I made um for District One. It was brought forth by a lot of the residents of San, San Miguel and the surrounding areas. Um, you know, Stoman Farms area, all the way down to La Mesa. People have been having this concern, conversation. And currently, the church's septic system is kaput, not working. Um, it is beyond repair and currently they're using. Okay, thank you. We do have Commissioner Sanchez on web acts. Um, so we have been used, they have been using porta potties. And trying to figure out the interim for, you know, people to use services while they're at service. Um, this came forth in community meetings. There was conversations with Robert Herrera as well as facilities on expansion of services in San Miguel to this area. Um, I actually had a conversation with Arturo Arribei uh Friday, I believe. About um the status of this as well as Rose Garcia, Senator Hamblin. And community leaders down there. So, we would love, I would personally love to see expanded services. In relation to the church building, if we can expand and build and bring those services to people. Cause a lot of those homes in San Miguel are older homes, multi-generational homes. And systems are failing, the septic is leaking, they might be on septic tanks, they might be on cesspools. Um, so I would love to see increased usability of any kind of project we do there. Uh but the community has really rallied around this project of getting the church tied into services. Because they don't really have a community center, they don't have a place to congregate, they don't have a place to do. Activities, so they're using the church and the church facilities, including the parish hall for all community activities, community meetings, listening sessions. Um, I know that Senator Hamblin and I and Representative Gallegos were down there for a meeting and it was in the parish hall. Um, so that is kind of their community center, so I would like to see this somehow move forward. But I would like it to include other properties and neighborhoods as well.
Do we have an estimate on how much it would cost to do this?
We do not at this time because we needed to know what the design parameters were. Uh obviously, if we're just hooking up one building, um that's a much different price than if we were putting in a lift station. To be able to uh capture gravity flow from other residents uh around the area. So, now, now that with this guidance, we'll be able to go back and actually task engineers to get us the study.
So, we actually do have a cost. I don't know if it was ever shared with you, so I apologize. Um, but Mr. Herrera did uh get a cost done from Bohan Houston. For what that would look like and just for the church itself to be tied in. They did a cost estimate um which would be for a. Trying to read it on the fly.
It was a small lift station and one connection.
And it was quite a bit of money, it was two hundred and six thousand dollars for this. Um, which is why if we can figure out how to include more properties, I know. No? No, nothing, it's chump change. Um, but that's kind of where the conversation of including more to make this more robust of a system. And also with the bill that Senator Hamblin put in. We would be able to offer services and grants to get individuals and homeowners tied into the system as long as we can expand it.
So I think the, I think the conversation should be, how likely is it that we can get money from Senator Hamblin? And uh in, in, I want in January or February? And how much can she provide in order to do these services? If you have any, any idea about that?
Um, well, as far as it goes for offering the funding for the tie-ins. The state of, the state can't just allocate money for tie-ins for homes, that's why we have to go out to find federal monies for that. As far as my understanding, and I think Mr. Macias was chiming in with some extra.
Yes, uh always extra or aspire to be. Jonathan Macias, Assistant County Manager and also Support Government Relations to include the advocacy done during the legislative session for twenty twenty-five. I just wanted to set some parameters for what we're discussing today, so the actual bill that, that was approved or that ha- received passage was SB three five seven. Known as the Essential Services Development Act. If you go back and you look at the presentations throughout the roundhouse, you'll see that this did receive wide-reaching community support. And it's because of the aging infrastructure throughout the community. Now, for the last year, the county, as you may remember during uh county, uh then interim county manager Lopez's stint. Uh had been working on a full county-wide assessment of the utilities, I think we're still pending that. Because of some of the um momentum that was received for this particular project, it was accelerated and that's what yielded the uh the quote from Mr. Edeta. So we have those to be able to take action, but to the chair's point, we're trying to see how we can have widespread impact as well. Uh the next steps in terms of potential funding would be yes, self-funding. There's also the opportunity for maybe us revisiting with Senator Hamblin, her first convening in the community is scheduled for July eighth, to my knowledge. And that would set the stage for things that could be directly funded under such mechanisms. There's also the opportunity for us to have a discussion. Uh Chair, I know we talked about many things during our ICIP process, we could talk about adding this one as we target sewer and water. Uh connections once we understand in order of magnitude for what we'd be looking at. And then last but not least, um there, well, I should just say, if we wait to put it on the capillar plate. It's likely that we would not see funding for this until potentially next September, October. So just in terms of what are the mechanisms for funding and how long we take. Because when I hear the word cesspool and others utilize, obviously we start broaching public health and safety concerns. Of which we'd like to take into account for these things, and with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Lopez.
Mr. Chair, yes, that. So uh I, ICIP certainly is now with SB three fifty-seven as Mr. Macias indicated. Uh a potential funding source for projects like this moving forward. But as you're also aware, we could use a lot of our money with a very small area impacts. And uh so that would need to be a strategic decision made by the board uh for what we put on ICIP. Um, and as ACMACius also indicated. If we try to fund this solely through ICIP, we are at least a year and a half out. Before we could actually start construction, so if this is a pressing need as your description indicates. Um, I would recommend you direct us to a more immediate funding source.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would think a couple things. If the church is at a point where they probably need to replace their septic system. Is, are they willing to provide us some, some assistance in doing some of this? So, we kind of a shared responsibility. So if they were, if they were gonna pay, let's say, twenty thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand for this, for this to replace their septic system, possibly they could put that in and we could add to that. In order to provide the immediate solution as opposed to us bear, uh bearing the entire cost. I think like shared costs with them and maybe some others in the community if they wanna connect as well to provide some funding. I think we need to, I think we need to pro- propose some sort of plan where there'd be some shared responsibility and cost.
Okay.
I think that, and the reason I would do that is because I don't wanna set a precedent that we're gonna go in and completely. Just um do all the job ourselves, so if, so other communities don't come to us and say, hey. You know, you spent a couple hundred thousand here, you need to come and do it all over the county. I think you wanna set a precedent, it's gonna be a shared responsibility so everybody understands that we're willing to help, but we're not gonna bear the whole burden.
Um, thank you for that, Commissioner Reynolds, and I, I, I can definitely see that point of view, I think. That, you know, as far as it goes with giving direction, like this is a pressing matter, this is something that the community is coming out and having multiple conversations. Um, and, and it is something that they need in this community that is very underserved, it's Colonia, it's very similar to. Um, you know, it, it is just south of Las Cruces, but they, they don't have a lot of the same resources that we have here. So I definitely understand, I think that's something that we can look at as well. What, I think the, the mechanism here and the way that Senator Hamblin's bill. Will help us is that if we as a county find funding to put in a pot to help issue a grant for these tie-ins. Um, businesses in San Miguel, homeowners in San Miguel, the church property, the, all that. Can, can access those fundings for the tie-in. But I think the thing that we need to look at funding is the system itself putting in a bigger. Um, a bigger lift station to service that area. So I think the conversation is, do we wanna look at monies to plan a bigger lift station for that community? Which I definitely would say please do, um with my entire heart, please get this done for these, these community members. And then the tie-ins can come with us going for federal grants, us going for state grants, EPA grants, uh or environment department grants. Then to put money into the funds so that they can access the tie-in funds.
Mr. Chair. I, I, I'm not, I wouldn't be against what you're saying, but I think there's a couple of things here that have to be taken into consideration. I think the timing doesn't put this anywhere near where it would help the church. So, you know, while.
What Senator Hamblin's bill did was make it accessible for everyone to, you know, and. Mr. Macias, if you can help me with this a little bit, but it basically gave us a mechanism to supersede anti-donation. By, we are able to set up a grant process here at the county. To where if we have people in, whether it's Chaparral or Hatch or anywhere, you know, La Mesa, San Miguel. That if we have a system that they can tie into, we can then set up a grant mechanism. To where they can apply saying, hey, we can set thresholds of whatever it is for them to be able to access the money. To pay and help offset the cost for the tie-in.
Mr. Chairman, before, before, I, I just wanted to finish my statement if I could. I, the reason I say is because we're looking at several things. Uh, Mr. Macias, can, can.
Perhaps this is a compromise.
Can I, can I speak?
Uh other ways, but let me, let me read from you the, the act. Because I think this will help us uh level set here. The act was specific in terms of the final language for relating to utilities. Creating the Essential Services Development Act to allow state support for infrastructure projects. That allow access to internet, energy, water, and wastewater services primarily for residential purposes. Having said that, what I'm hearing is uh Commissioners Reynolds asking for some level of um skin in the game by this entity. Perhaps asking what amount that they already have reserved for maybe maintenance related to the existing septic system that is in current failure. Or if they were going to be planning a replacement. Uh just cause I'm hearing that if for some reason they shutter and they move on, that you don't want that investment to be for naught, but I think I'm hearing the chair too. Say that we're looking to see how we can bring this for the entire community and to also possibly spur some economic development in that area. So just what I'm hearing, uh ACM Lopez, anything else on your end?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Santos, Commissioner Santos.
I, I apologize, I think my, my issue is in, I, I, I understand where the bill helps us. And where we now have some flexibility, I think there's a couple of things we need to understand is. They, if I understood the description uh and the scope of what we're looking at. This is not something that's gonna be done within the next month or two. This is something that's gonna be a year, possibly multiple years. In order for us to be able to implement and then be able to then be, to, to have the ability to connect. Which is why I'm saying my concern is, is that we're looking at something as if it's very short-term and maybe I misunderstood the description. That was being done, but it doesn't seem to me that this is short-term and something quick. And so I think we should be taking a, a longer view with this, not saying we don't do this. But understanding what is the strategy here because we all have communities that we want to get connected. Um, and just because a legislator is coming and, and, you know, we're, we're running into the same issues. That when, when we talk ICIP and a, a com- a, a legislator telling us where they wanna put their money and they can do that however they want. But I'm feeling like they're driving us to do what they want us to do and we need to be having more constructive conversations. I also have this, and, and cautious because of the potential of what we're gonna have to use our general fund with, with CRUA. So, I, I, I'm, I'm not against this in, in, in principle. But I think we need to look at this and I agree with Commissioner Reynolds where, you know, is there a possibility? You know, obviously looking at, at other funding and if they're willing to put in some money here. But I, I, I think like I said, we need to take a, 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 a step away from this for a second and not look so specific at it. And look how it builds into the larger system and our goals as a county because. If we're gonna start spending our monies now, especially if we're gonna go and, and, and if we're successful with a geo-bond. We're gonna, we're gonna start leveraging ourselves way too quickly here. So, just I, I, like I said, I'm, I'm not, I'm not against the project, I just wanna know that the strategy is sound.
Yes.
In the other communities as well, as you pointed out, we could pick any, almost any community in this county. And say, we could put a lift station, we could go in and do some sewer work, I mean. So it, we have to be caution, cautious to make sure that we don't. Make this community a, a one-off that we can't duplicate throughout the rest of the county. And so I'm like, like I'm, I just think we need a strategy here and make sure we have a good boundaries that we can work in so the committees understand what their responsibility is. And what their obligations are in order to partner with us. I mean, cause I, obviously we have, like you said, CRUA, heck, we've got so much we could do down in San Luis, so we can spend all of our resources down there. And never touch another community, but we can't let that happen either. And Chaparral, same thing, um Hatch, you know, several areas. So, I, I, I sympathize, but I still wanna make sure we do something that's responsible that we can work with. And um if we can come up with a plan on that, I'm all in favor of that.
So, I don't, I mean, I definitely understand where the conversation is coming from and how to leverage public funds properly and responsibly. Um, and I, I get it, but we've also done projects in other communities. That have been a one-off, that hasn't been duplicated in other communities. Um, whether it's, you know, infrastructure, parks and recreation, community centers, you know. County programming or whatever it is, and it hasn't been duplicated in every single district and every single uh community equitably. So, I get it, but this is a need for this community, they are on failing septic systems, this is an emergency. This isn't a one-off, this isn't a, you know, let's talk about it for five years because we have been having these conversations for a year. You know, this wasn't just started up, you know, in January of this year, this has been going on for a year where we've been, where we have been. Putting in to play certain aspects to get this done. You know, we don't have, I, I don't wanna say that we have time to, you know, go after. ICIP funding and apply for every grant and every single avenue that we have. We can do that, but this is a system that is currently operating. This is a system that has a capacity for more tie-ins. So, what I'm asking and, you know, almost pleading to do is, is let's look at how to get this done for the, that community. Because they are in a state of emergency, you know, they are reaching out to us, they are having the community meetings that this is a one. So, I don't wanna say that this is a legislative-directed program because it's not. I asked us to have this conversation, I brought this forward to the county. Um, you know, and it's been ten-plus years that this community has been asking for the infrastructure for tie-ins, sewer, water. Um, and they haven't gotten it, and to be quite honest, it's because. The person in the seat has not been advocating in the past um for these communities and I'm doing that right now. So, you know, it does take five people to make something happen on this board, but I'm asking you that, you know, the community is asking for us to do something. To help them at the end of the day. So, I am asking that we figure this out and maybe during this process when we get a study done in an engineering study to figure out how to make the capacity work. And how to make this system work for the residents. Maybe there's an avenue to be able to replicate that in all the other communities that we have, but we have to start somewhere, so why can't we start here?
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I just don't see when the church all of a sudden needs us to jump. Why it's a emergency here when the Archdiocese of Las Cruces probably has enough money to cover their septic system. So, I, 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 I get it, the church is, is, is an important pillar of that community. And I say that with love because that was the church that my, that my family went to and I know that church very well. But I, I just, when I'm thinking of where I sit and how we're gonna be allocating money. I, I'm okay maybe moving forward with planning and, and look, doing an engineering study. But in terms of trying to jump from the beginning to, hey, we're gonna use our funds here to do all these things. I, 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 I can't support that unless we look at it strategically through the whole commu- through the whole county.
And Commissioner, I, I don't disagree with you, this isn't just a one-off for this property. Um, it is for all the residents in San Miguel that are asking for this. It is not just the church property that we're worried about, but that is the biggest emergency for that community right now. But the surrounding neighbors, the surrounding businesses, all up and down that community is asking for these services. So whether it's Joe Schmo on the corner of the road. Asking to be tied in because their septic system is failing and a new septic system costs fifteen thousand dollars. Or it's a business or a church or anything like that or the school down there. I, I understand what you're saying and I definitely can comprehend this. But at the end of the day, I'm advocating for my community, which I was elected to do. Cause they are contacting me on the regular about this because they care so much. And they're willing to put aside their personal issues with the system because the church is so widely used. Now whether it's a church or it was a community center or it was a business or a park or whatever it is. They're advocating and I'm being that mouthpiece right now. But as far as it goes with a, with a county-wide approach. I'm, I'm fine with that, but I do wanna make sure that we understand that this community is having an emergency with their sewer systems. And residents alike, you know, the, everyone is having these issues, so it's not just the church, but that is a narrative that is loudest. But that is the narrative that is loudest.
No problem, okay, here we go. Now now we can hear. Let me re- recap a little bit, I recommend that uh we take the same approach that we're doing in Chaparral with. Having a master plan developed for wastewater specific to the San Miguel area. That's what we're doing in Chaparral because that plan was coming up on twenty-five years old and had not accommodated for growth and development. By getting the master plan. They just fixed it, just barely. By getting the master plan done, then we can look uh holistically at where lift stations should be rather than than where. It was looked at last year, which was only to serve that one location, we can look at what may be able to be served. And uh as this commission is aware, we can make sure that we're not creating problems with odors and other things. Um by not having a a good systemic approach to the wastewater system.
Let me ask a timeline question, let's say that we let's say we made a decision to put the lift station in today. And we said, okay, we're gonna pay the two hundred thousand, let's just make an assumption for a second, how long would it take to actually do the to do that? Would it take a month, two months, six months, a year?
Because we're coming up on a new fiscal year, uh Commissioner, I believe it would be able to be accomplished within six months.
Okay, six months, okay, so if the church is in a crisis right now with their septic tank as it is. I mean, could they actually go for six months without doing some repair to that? And it sounds to me like from what you're saying, it sounds mu- much more urgent than what six months will allow. I mean, am I right or am I wrong? I mean, it sounds pretty dire, actually.
I mean, yeah, they're not able to use facilities, flush a toilet or wash their hands. There, so that's why they're using porta potties that may or may not be working for them, to be honest, especially in this heat. I don't know if I'd wanna use a porta potty in a hundred and six degrees, but. But yeah, no, this is a a big issue for them, this is something that they're advocating for. You know, it's God only knows what it's doing to the earth and the soil around around the church, right there on. Isn't there a district right there too, but um. There you go, um but yeah, I mean, can they continually wait? I mean, they came up with the solution of a porta potty, but. You know, for older people in the community that are going there for events, like it's miserable, they're not able to do it. So that's why we're bringing this up today.
And if we were to wait for this master plan. It would take probably a year?
It would add probably uh two to three months. Uh this is not a large service area, so this one actually could be much quicker than some of the others.
And the service area, sorry, and the service area is owned by the county, correct?
Mr. Chair, that is correct, this is a Doniana County Service Area.
No, that's fine, um. If it was in my district and I had this issue, well, uh you know. I definitely would be the same as the chair, wanting to make sure that. Um the people were being, you know, listened to and if it's already been a year, it's like. You know, in individuals down south have been eighteen months. You know, I don't want people to be waiting longer than what they've already been waiting and if. If we wait, then we we're gonna continue to wait and continue to wait. Um I do believe we do need to do the master plan and I think we just need to start doing the master plans, I guess if. This is going to be something now that we're gonna be looking upon at other communities. You know, whether it's wastewater, water or um internet and I believe um. Does that um include uh natural gas, right, cuz it's a utility, you know?
I don't recall hearing ACM Macias lists natural gas.
No, uh Commissioner or Chair and Commissioner Gomeros, however. The term energy could be broadly interpreted and I'd have to double check and see what the uh the language was in that bill and I can get back to you and your EA already.
Thank you.
Yeah, does anybody know if we have a community center close to this church?
We don't, La Mesa is the closest one.
How far is that, ten miles, five miles?
It's just right down the road.
I mean, so could they, could we offer them the use of the community center temporarily and for church services and stuff? I mean, real, I'm I'm looking, you know, we're talking about a mercy situation, would that be better than porta potties, you know?
Well, you know how we have individuals that um. Do not like uh to mix uh church and state. Government, church and government, I don't know if people might have that problem. Uh I it's just something, you know, that I know some people have kind of mentioned.
Well, one's one's about, you know, making policy and law based on church and the other one is about servicing the community and helping them out and giving them an opportunity to. Have an alternate resource to use in an emergency and for emergency services, we have a lot of flexibility if we call this an emergency.
I like that idea if the church is willing to have services there while we're taking the care of the situation, so. That way, within the next six months, if eh or longer, which I hope not. Uh they could, you know, take that opportunity to use that, I I. Uh but you know, I don't know what's happening within the La Mesa. Uh Community Center and what they have going on there as well.
So Mr. Chair, uh Commissioners, just for full transparency, uh so everyone is aware. We do have uh individuals and organizations that rent our facilities. Some of which are holding religious services uh as part of that rental. Uh the whether it's a religious service or not is not a a factor. Um it's first come, first served on reservations and as long as everybody's paying the same.
Well, we have we have a meeting at Dolores Wright in Chaparral for church services and they they ran it and that's what they use it for. I I don't have a problem with that, but I mean, if what uh Comis- Mistress out their hand is the same, is this is so urgent. I think we should im- immediately try to find an alternate way to provide service to them as safer. And and healthier and you know, then move with the master plan for a couple of months, see what that is. And then decide once we have that exactly how quickly we can move in a one direction. I think that's the the s- the studious way to do it.
And if I may, I think that's great, we can definitely offer and that as an option to them. I do know that the La Mesa community does utilize a community center very, very, very often, I'll actually be there Thursday for lunch. But I mean, we can definitely leverage all of these options for them, whether or not they. They bite at that is up to them, um. And you know, this commission is gonna make a decision, we're gonna give a nod to. You know, ACM Macias and ACM Lopez on which direction we're gonna go, you know. This has been kind of in conversation for a while. We're kinda waiting on Senator Hamblin's bill to move forward on these conversations. As to figure out what mechanisms we have to kinda. Leverage every single funding source that we have and I'm sorry, I don't look at you, I keep looking over here.
I'm looking over here too.
I feel like my back is to you, um. But at the end of the day. The county has a really great opportunity here because the county owns and operates a system already. It's already ours, it's not Lower Rio Grande, it's not Crua, it's not. You know, any other system that we have in our county, it's actually a county-owned and operated system, so. As we're talking about building up a public works department, expanding utility services. This is the best option for us to test a theory to see if we can get people to wanna tie in, I mean, we already own the system. We would own whatever equipment we put into this system is ours, we own it, so. This would be kind of the best case scenario for this conversation. It's not like the conversation of Crua, it's not about the conversation of Doniana Mutual, it it's it's ours, like this is. Building Doniana's Public Works Department and building our utility department, so. I I I think the narrative of it just being the church is a narrative that is how this conversation started. But through community meetings and community outreach and people reaching out to me as a commissioner, it has come up that, you know. Their wells are running dry. Their septic are failing, um the water table is even lower than it was and to. Dig a deeper well and to extend your well, it costs thousands, tens of thousands of dollars to go deeper. And this community cannot afford that, so you know, with wastewater, they also want potable water, they want drinking water. So this is my job as a commissioner, I'm bringing it up to you guys and I hope that we can support this, but. This would be our system, we own and operate it, it just it makes sense to invest money into. Where the future of the system can go.
Have have we looked at any money from the um Colonial Fund? Are there is there any money available? I something I think I something else we should put.
Mister Chair, Commissioner Reynolds, we have not applied for colonialist funding for this. Because of the anti-donation clause up to this point. So so now we will be able to at the next cycle.
So we should do, so we should do two things, I I believe first, master plan, for immediate immediate relief if we can help them with community center. Master plan as quickly as possible, uh and apply for funding with Colonial, apply for funding with federal, state, when we can help with it. And then see what the community can actually put in, at least the church, you know, to solve some of the problems and and yes, then we move forward with this, I don't. I don't have a problem with those, provided we have the right plan.
Mr. Chairman, I I just have a question, I I know you said the the anti-donation, we've never had issues with anti-donation. With connect with connectivity, we did we did it over in Chaparral. Because because of it it was an inginging community, you you, we can't say San Miguel is not. So I I guess I don't understand why, they said we're we haven't looked at this before through the colonial.
So Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sanchez, this particular project had not been. And and this particular project has the uniqueness uh as it relates to the anti-donation clause. Of the desire of the project to go all the way to the building and actually replace. Uh pull out the septic tank uh and connect it. Uh up to this point, the county's infrastructure investments have only been pretty much in the roadway with a stubout. And then it was up to the individual customer to pay for that connection from their facility to that stubout. So the what what's been requested um per Senator Hamblin's bill is that we actually connect all the way to the structure.
And and I think, but it was my understanding in Chaparral, that was, and we see in the city of Las Cruces doing the same thing, they got money for those connections. Through the Colonial's infrastructure fund, I thought.
For for some funding sources, you are correct, Commissioner Sanchez, uh i- if it was not state or local tax dollars. Funding it, uh then that was allowed in some cases. And ju- just like the uh the ARCA funds, um you know, if it was a federal grant in particular, sometimes colonias. Um a- and EPA was giving grants uh for a while there for uh water protection. Uh so they were allowing that all the way to that to the home.
It makes it makes sense to service the community with our sewer lines, I have no problem with that in the water. But I understand too, I mean, we're charging fifty, sixty dollars a month, everybody in Chaparral for the for for actually having the service. And we also we also charge them, I think it's like four, six thousand, maybe ten thousand dollars actually get connected. So if the community is interested in paying for the service to get connected and pay for the sewer and water service. Then I say yes, I mean, we go we can go forward with this, but uh if they're just saying, look, sa- save the church. That's gonna be our only customer, I think that's not what we wanna do, that's our that's gonna be our to not be our master plan.
And that is why this is here today because it cannot, that cannot be our only option. It's just a church, it would have to be a system that serves the community, so I definitely wholeheartedly agree with you on that, we would not be able to. Um do this without the community tying in to make it a worthwhile investment, but also. To kinda solidify the plan, so I agree with you a hundred percent, and then as far as it goes with the tie-in cost. The reason why this is coming up now was because. You know, the like I wanna point out, this was a huge community advocacy effort, like. Grasswork grassroots to the T, when you think about this. They organized, they got their legislators involved, they got their commission involved, you know, Robert Herrera has had umpteen meetings. In San Miguel about this project, about the sewer, about what's going on, and that is why it's here today because. Senator Hamblin was so moved by the grassroots organization of this. That we got the bill done to help with those tie-in costs. Um without dealing with anti-donation, so that way we're able to help with that even more so than we were in Chaparral. So there's a great possibility that if we do our due diligence and the work that we need to do, we can actually. Have people kind of, I I wanted to put in quotes, apply for. Funding for the tie-in and have the tie-in completely paid for through outside funding of the county.
Well, I'm I'm on a septic sip system myself and I've looked at the cost of replacing it, if mine goes bad and my neighbors have had some problems with theirs. And we're looking at fifteen to twenty thousand dollars to replace the system. So if in fact that's happening throughout the whole community, I think if they understand and they agree with what we're trying to accomplish with the total plan. That they'll see the benefits of going and paying the five to ten, whatever it is, to get connected to our sewer system, we're gonna put it in. And if the community and all the people who have done signed the petition are interested and understand and really. Uh a- agree with what we're trying to accomplish as a master plan, then I think we absolutely should move forward with this. But I think without the master plan, I think we don't have the commitment from the community or our 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 county in order to do it. We need to move on, I would prove that right now, but as far as taking action on this, the plan. And see the commitment from the community to to actually uh support us on this so that they all participate.
I think that's a great first step.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Do we have a policy um for the cost for tie-ins?
Mister Chair, Commissioner Gomeros, yes-ish no. That that is something that we are studying right now, starting with the master plan in Chaparral, uh with Vasco Hannah Houston, help us. Identify what we should be charging, uh other systems have fixed fees. For connections, especially when there's a development in an area. And instead, what we've been doing is one-off costs, where we would assess where the customer is. And calculate out the cost specific to that customer rather than having a a fixed fee. So we're hoping that uh by looking at things systemically, we can come up with those fixed fees, which will help everybody plan much better.
And and you know, we need to do that because we've got one water company here in town that was asked to provide service to a a new development. Uh and now you're just one house and they wanted to charge a hundred thousand dollars because of the distance from their well. And and we can't have that, so that's something that we absolutely need to decide first thing, if we're gonna do a whole community. And we want, we don't wanna say, look, you're ten miles away, so it's gonna cost you a hundred thousand, but you're a mile away, so it's gonna cost you four thousand. But we really do need to put that as part of our master plan about what we're gonna do, this is a good community to start that way, so that's a great great question.
Thank you for also elaborating for me what I was gonna say.
You're welcome.
So Mr. Chair, if I'm hearing correctly, just to summarize, uh we will proceed immediately with getting a master plan. Uh done for the San Miguel area and if I heard uh between the lines. We will also work with the water provider in the area to look at uh seeing how we could do a dig once. And put some water lines in at the same time that we put sewer lines in uh in order to expand where their services.
And and I know for a fact that Alta de las Flores Water would love to have that conversation. Perfect. Any other direction from the board on this issue?
Uh you know, I think we could also um start thinking about the serious consideration of a franchise for water systems and sewer systems. And the county, cuz we have to have some sort of, and and part of the master plan has to be, what are we gonna do long-term for everybody? It can't just be just for this community, but let's just get a master plan for this community. But let's also understand that that master plan has to feed into a countywide system that we wanna consider as well.
So Mr. Chair, uh Commissioner Reynolds, a. A franchise agreement or or a franchise ordinance uh is currently being drafted by outside council for us. To bring forward to the board here uh in the future.
And also, if you can just snap your fingers and make all of our issues go away in the county, that'd be great too, if you can add that to the punch list today.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Sanchez.
I I mean, I I if there's. If there's an opportunity to, like you said, I'm I'm good with the, like you said, I I prefer the master plan. If there's some other outside funding. That happened, that that the that you're able to find to fund some of this, I'm I'm good with that, I think that there's a potential to. To look at this. I I I just, like I said, I I wanna make it very clear, I'm not against any of this. We need, we all need them in our community, we see it, I think, like I said, my frustration comes with. Us as a board agreeing that we wanna move forward with plans, so that we know where we're gonna put money year one, year two, year three. And then, you know, understanding that that situations come up with emergencies, but, you know. When we agreed to do this, and then all of a sudden a legislator comes and says, I wanna spend money here, and then we jump? I thought we all agreed that enough's enough with that, and we've seen. Uh, you know, examples of it even, you know, where we've done this last year, and I get frustrated with it because. We say we're gonna do something and then we don't do it, we we go back to, okay, we're 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 gonna get money here, we're gonna go do it. And 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 we need, we we, I don't know, that that's where my frustration comes from, Mister Chairman, is very much that. We should be moving to our our plans, being able to pivot where we need, where something's an emergency. Um, you know, I. But, you know, we we can't just, every time a legislator tells us to jump, we do. So, we'll we'll see where this goes, but I I think that's where my frustration comes from, that's where I've tried to operate from within. Uh, what we do in my district, and and if you tell me I'm I'm wrong, I'm I'm good with that, I I. I don't wanna be unfair to anybody, I wanna make sure we're all fair with each other, we're all looking and making sure how we. How we're taking care of each of our, our our communities. Um, and but also doing this in a, in a, in a meaningful way where it it allows us to continue to build. Bigger and better.
And I I respect those comments, I I really do, Commissioner Sanchez. I wanna say that this is not a legislative-directed. Project, this is something that the community has brought up again and again and again. And brought to me and included Senator Hamblin and Representative Gallegos. The only thing that the legislators did was give us an avenue to help with those tie-in costs. Um, that is their role in this, the role of me and the constituents in the community is. Is bringing this to us to see if there's something that we can do, um, but if you wanna put it on someone. Put it on someone, it's it's me, I've asked for this project, I've asked for this conversation. And as far as funding opportunities, I have a. SharePoint drive ready to go to send out to the commissioners and Macias and Lopez that has many, many, many estate and. Um, federal funding opportunities that, uh, Fernanda, my EA, has been working on and. There's money out there to help with this, so I do wanna put that out there, that there's money to help with this. But it was that key bill that Senator Hamblin did, that will let us be able to take this money and spend it on residents. To help out, so, that's all I wanted to point out.
Chair, if I may, this this topic comes to a close. So of course, our, uh, our grant support, they are watching as we get ready for the next discussion, so Rosalina just, uh, texted she'd love to be connected with Fernanda. They have been looking at those, I'm certain, over the last couple of years in terms of some of the grant opportunities. We just have to take into account what our capacity looks like, especially given some of the contracts that were recently extended. I myself just signed a couple that related to execution of grants as well as what we can do internally, but yes, we'll put Fernanda in contact with Insight. Thank you so much.
Will do, thank you.
Okay, are we ready, bless you. Goodness.
We're wearing the same shirt.
Um, are we good to move on, board? Yeah, okay, moving on, we do have item number two, which is the bond discussion. Thank you. We're looking at it from the perspective that Hilltop recommended, that we are to be vague until we come in. And have a discussion about what the needs in the community are, and we'll talk a little bit further in terms of what. Uh, tools we'll be utilizing as part of the endeavors in this bond, if I could go back to, uh, the slides, I still. Uh, this, uh, uh, outreach has already been conducted, as y'all know, Commissioner Gomeros and Commissioner Reynolds both have. Uh, community meetings or town hall meetings. Just as a topical item, and we'll be sure, Commissioner Gomeros, that we work in coordination with you. We've already received your requests for the flip charts, but we'll talk a little bit more about the other toolkits that we'll be providing to you. And community so that you can be well armed with information, next slide. All right, now let's talk about why we're doing this, and I had to go back and reflect because sometimes our work. Doesn't feel like it has that spark of that meeting, but it wasn't that long ago that we did just meet in March with, uh, at the retreat and we met with one of the outside. Uh, facilitators. And just keep in mind that everything that we think about with regards to the bond, and quite frankly, everything that we're doing for the next four and a half to five years should be underpinned. By the vital conditions, which are also known as the strategic plan. So every time you think about waking up, think about how your actions here at the county are being. Uh, are contributing towards to being driven by this will here. Because if we don't ask ourselves that question, then we kinda lose, lose the plot in terms of what we're here doing. We can't have those important discussions about how we're gonna be funding them and also the impact that they're gonna have. So you'll start seeing this, and also this is my my wheelhouse, no pun intended, in terms of what I'll be supporting the county ma- manager with in terms of execution of the strategic plan. And then, of course, we had our lovely photo from when we concluded that day, and we all left with hope and, uh, and, uh, opportunity for a better tomorrow. Next slide. All right, so let's talk about what the internal bond team will look like, in truth, this is a little bit of a, of a tricky slide because it's gonna involve everybody at the county. My goal here is that everybody feels comfortable with the speaking points about why we're doing this. Why are we doing this for the community and for the betterment of all of our neighbors? And also to have a discussion point in terms of, may, if not now, when? How much longer are we going to hold off on some of these potentials for improvement in our community? But it is gonna take principally the direction of the, uh, Board of County Commissioners, which you're already facetiously doing, obviously the County Manager's Office. Our Budget Department, which will be there to walk us along the way in terms of. What our capacities are to braid this or combine it with other funds, whether it be our revenue, some of the our other funding that are coming in. As well as our Communications Department that will help us with the social, as well as making sure that we work with economic development on a bilingual outreach. And then also working with Facility Services so that we get an actual idea of what those costs are for these projects, like I mentioned with the FCA. And of course, we're gonna wanna do this intended with legal because there are many legal requirements when it comes to putting out the bond. You heard from the Hilltop rep that the actual language, language of the, um. Uh, of the question needs to be meticulously reviewed for action so that people understand, and then last but not least, economic development. But again, in truth, it's gonna take all of the county, making sure we pull this off, next slide. Now let's look to some shiny faces to see what it's gonna look like in terms of external bond team. Just yesterday, we had a kickoff meeting with Gabe Gallegos, who is gonna be the lead from Sunny Five O Five. We're fortunate that Gabe is actually from this community, though he might not live here now, he will be spending a lot of time between now and November. In our community to make sure that he connects, uh, together with our internal team. And gets the commission, the toolkit that we just talked about, to making sure that we execute. His, uh, colleague is Ashley Sterling, who will also be helping, and then they have a whole army of people at Sunny Five O Five that will be helping with everything. This was part of my commitment to the county manager, making sure that we had it queued up the minute you took action. So they're already on a statewide pricing agreement contract, and we're already discussing conversations, like how will we approach the message? And when, what are our major timelines? And last but not least, we have Rosie, not to be that, at Insight Network and her team, including Daniel Skirchley. And others that'll make sure that we infuse the vital conditions, but also have discussions about how we're going to thrive together. Because we can throw money at many problems, but if we don't have that heart or that intentionality, then we're gonna fall flat. Next slide. And with that, I'll pause and give, uh, Rosie an opportunity to share a little more about her vision. I don't believe we have anybody from Sunny Five O Five because they did have a conflict, but they are here in spirit. Rosie, I'll turn it over to you as you come off of mute.
Thank you so much, um, I do believe I see Sunny Five O Five, uh, with Gabe Gallegos represented in case he needs time on the floor. Oh, good morning, uh, to our Board of County Commission, we appreciate the time. We had a session yesterday, uh, June sixteenth, and had the opportunity to meet with the internal and external bond team. And all we wanted to share as far as the vision is that the vital conditions, especially those for health and well-being. These are going to be a framework, um, that's going to support this bond. And we're very excited about working with Sunny Five O Five because, simply put, the vital conditions. Are the property of places and institutions that we all need all the time to reach our full potential. And this is what we're talking about in one, on one side is our infrastructure. But on the other, we're talking about how this infrastructure is also creating a place of belonging and a culture of belonging, which is. One of our foundational vital conditions. Um, the vital conditions framework will provide a very strategic lens. For prioritizing these infrastructure investments and how they have a long-term impact on community thriving. So, please, we don't wanna think about this from just the lens of brick and mortar. This is really about community resilience, so not just physical infrastructure. And the intent here too is that, um, the vital conditions lends an evidence-based investment priority framework. To Sunny Five O Five and the county on ensuring that we're thinking about the health and wealth and well-being. From a data-driven perspective, and this is going to support consensus across public, private, and nonprofit sectors and individuals. Families, communities, so the intent here is that we are looking for, uh, the vital conditions to. Make sure it's not siloed, this isn't about a Rex, uh, you know, bond, this isn't, um, about just physical infrastructure. This is about looking at how vital conditions can help with excess rate of illness, unemployment, housing distress, food insecurity. Loneliness, there's also a deep component of community engagement. That I know the commission is very excited about. And so we're gonna be talking through the authentic community engagement in bond planning processes. Uh, in partnership with the county and, um, Sunny Five O Five. So, uh, the last piece I'll share is that even through transitions of the various, uh, presidential administrations. The vital conditions framework continues to be a part of an interim agency plan at the federal level. And they have worked across, uh, various different types of departments for long-term recovery and resilience. So the framework maintains its credibility and alignment from a federal level, a a national level of peers that are working on vital conditions framework. And then, of course, within our own state here in Southern Doniana, Southern New Mexico, so. I'll, uh, stop there and turn the floor back over to ACM Macias and stand for any questions that you all may have.
Thank you, Rosie, I'm gonna turn it over to Gabe, who I I did hear was on the call, so Gabe, if you'd like to go down and introduce yourself and just share how you're gonna be in the driving. Driver's seat as you help guide the county through this process.
Absolutely, um, thank you Mister Chair, members of the commission, um, my name is Gabriel Gallegos. Um, I'm the Director of Strategic Partnerships at Sunny Five O Five. Um, we're one of the largest public affairs and communications firms, um, in New Mexico, um, as ACM Macias mentioned, I am from Las Cruces originally. It was great to be back home for a few days this weekend, um, and getting to spend some time with the team yesterday. Um, as Rosie mentioned, we had a really productive conversation yesterday about. Um, creating that that action plan to achieve, um, a victory for the community and and to achieve a victory for this bond issue and. Um, in in November, um, as A- as A- as ACM Macias mentioned. Our first step will be to, one, engage the community in, um, in community input sessions, and we. Had some good brainstorming yesterday about exactly how to do that. Um, and then in in then in addition to that, creating our initial messaging framework for how to best articulate. Um, the visioning and the ultimate outcomes that this bond issue is, um, is seeking to achieve. Uh, a little bit of background on our experience with these types of campaigns, we've successfully supported organizations like Amatca, Sandoval County. Um, and Northern New Mexico College on, um, similar bond issues where maybe. Um, a- at at the onset, the the language was was a bit vague, but we ultimately worked with the community to provide specificity. And rally momentum around a broader narrative, um, so we're, um, absolutely thrilled to be on the team. Um, and excited to to be working with everybody on on at the county, thank you.
Thank you, Gabe, I really appreciate it, so as we look at the meeting recap from yesterday, eh, from the, uh, lens of transparency, here's what we talked about. We talked about our initial roles in communication. We are going to have to be, uh, a little bit more humble in the way that we approach this because a lot of times we act in silos. And so we're gonna make sure we bring those silos down and that we understand where do the, does the outside, uh, contractor start or vendor, uh, start? Where do we let them share what their subject matter expertise is and provide to us what are known as assets? And then asset is a fancy way of saying a graphic or messaging or notes, and how that gets handed over. Or maybe works in conjunction with our team that manages our social. We'll also be thoughtful about the deadline, initial deadline for setting messaging framework. And that's where I talked about making sure that everybody at the county, including the commissioners and their EAs, already I see you back there. Feel comfortable and armed with messaging to where they can have the same singular talking point. It's so easy when we embark embark on these kinds of projects for us to get drawn in by the gravity of the needs of a one district. But the goal is to make sure that we honor and see what the needs are to be able to provide, uh, with a level of equity for these types of projects. Uh, we'll also be relying on Commissioner feedback for what works and what doesn't work, and then we'll also have a discussion about how we can give you those same messages. Uh, at least one commissioner has already given us dates of their community meetings, we have, I think if I'm not mistaken, they're gonna be six or seven. We won't necessarily program to be at every single meeting, but we'll make sure you have the talking points. So that you and your EA can bring back the information with what's known as the fidelity of the clarity, so that our team is able to. Uh, divide and conquer together and get that information into one place so we can start synthesizing it. Uh, we'll also be setting reoccurring meetings for when we are meeting. And then, uh, we'll create a project timeline and achieve it that we can probably put outward so that people can see. That more more importantly, the community can see how this is progressing. And then we'll have a development timeline of related to the surveying and the listening strategy, uh, together with Insight, who excelled at this, as you may remember. During the, uh, the creation of the vital conditions and the, um, the strategic plan efforts. Uh, the last thing I'll mention is that this will be intertwined very much so with other things, they're tangential, but they are equally important. The capital athlete is quickly among us, uh, you can see that some of the legislators are already kicking off their meetings. But what's more important right now is actually our ICIP planning process, which is going to be due, uh, July eleventh. Commissioners, we've already met with all of you last week, so thank you for making yourselves available, as you may remember, those are for critical projects. Uh, it to include some recreation, and we'll see how we can weave those in, and then we've also got a discussion point as Stephen. And purchasing work to address, uh, the, uh, the master planning efforts that are going to be underway. So I'll turn it over to ACM Lopez to share a little bit more about the, uh, the next steps and the timelines. So I'll turn it over to ACM Lopez to share a little bit more about the uh the next steps and the timelines for our master planning efforts with our facilities uh in place of uh ACM Ware, who is currently traveling to a uh work-related travel in Clovis.
Giving just a moment for the camera to pan. Mr. Chair and Commissioner, Stephen Lopez, Assistant County Manager. Uh as ACM Macias indicated, the process is underway for selection of a company to conduct the master planning. Uh that meeting is set up to take place uh to review the applicants uh with a committee that was appointed by C M Scott Andrews. So within the next two weeks, we should be bringing forth to the commission uh a selection. Uh hopefully, assuming that uh that we get somebody out of this uh that that is acceptable to the group. Uh and then that will uh, once you voted to approve uh the award of the uh contract, uh will allow the master planning to get underway.
I'm gonna go really slow. Thank you, ACM Lopez, as they pan and bring it back to me. And with that, I will stand for any questions as will Insight and Sunny five oh five. Chair?
Awesome. Thank you so much. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Ju- just one, and I I I I don't know whether it changes how the approach that's being taken by the uh when when we're looking at this uh initiative or the referendum, but in one of the things that I think I worry about is the fact that this election that where this is gonna be on, the marquee election is gonna be municipal. Um we've seen in the city of Las Cruces that it's brought out a significant n- uh number of voters who may not have participated in the past. Um given, a- and I I'm not at all um, you know, missing the fa- or, you know, looking over the fact that, you know, we also have four other municipalities that will have elections. That's, you know, Anthony Macia, um Hatch and and Sunland Park. But the reason I bring it up is because of the fact that a lot of people in the county probably are not gonna turn up because of the fact that i- it's not their usual cycle to come out on on an odd year. So given that, I'm looking, I just looking at the the biggest, at the elephant in the room, which happens to be the city of Las Cruces. City of Las Cruces just passed um barely, I should say barely, but it was not overwhelming their their new G R T, which um could potentially uh create negative sentiment towards um this and the, you know, our our, you know, our initiative here. Um is there any idea or there or to to look through that and how to how to advertise with that in mind, or is is the experience to not even um take that into account and make it more about the, a- as we're talking the vital conditions or such?
Chair and Commissioner Sanchez, I I think we owe it to our community and to your constituents to be as transparent as possible and have those discussions. Actually, just this week, I ha- I fielded a phone call from one of Commissioner Sanchez's uh constituents that was calling that they wanted to speak directly to the county manager about their insurance rates on their mobile home. Because there may be some impact on the ma- minimum amount of coverage that they need and how that was gonna impact them. So we know that there are sensitivities in the community based on what we are proposing. We know the sensitivities for where the city is currently and what they have leveraged or bonded and the impact and also who is likely to turn out. But the reason I bring up that conversation that I had with that constituent is because as much as they call on us to help guide them through difficult situations, I think it's now us to reverse activate that and make sure that each one of you as commissioners are programming the amount of outreach so that we can have those conversations with love and with intentionality to let them know what the impact would be, based on the very specific um existing um taxing or mellowing rate, so that they know what it's gonna look like. When I heard about this discussion last week, I think some of you compared this to, oh, that might be one pizza a month, or that might be two coffees. But that are difficult decisions that even many of our own neighbors need to be able to make. And we'll have to be able to let them know what they would get for that. Uh so that has been taken into account. Uh that is not my area of expertise, and that's why we did bring Sunny five oh five, but I know Gabe was already excited to be able to craft that message so that we could have that conversation with heart. And I know Rosie was also uh had some thoughts to it, so I'll defer to them if it like, if they'd like to add to what I've said so far. Rosie or?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Sure, yeah, I can. Um thank you, Mr. Chair and and members of the commission for that question. I uh, you know, I I think that when we look at this year's race, I think you have brought up some very um important and urgent um campaign dynamics this year, and I think that that's not lost on us that you know, that these will be, these will create challenges in terms of our messaging, especially when we're thinking about um, you know, targeting a a major voter base in in the city of Las Cruces. What I can say though is that our experience in these types of um kind of, if you will, the off years is that you know, we we are speaking to a to a pretty highly engaged voter base. This is a voter base that normally um, you know, interacts with information, that that wants to learn, wants to seek out um, you know, education and and documentation about about the race at hand. So um I think it's it's on, it it is on us to, you know, articulate um not only the specifics of the bond issue, but what this could mean to 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 the broader community. Um and oftentimes, if we do that, if we do that successfully, we're we're talking to a voter base that is willing to receive that information and make a make an educated decision based on that information. So um those are the, those, that's the challenge ahead of us, and I um, you know, our our thing, and our team is already crafting messages and plans to get in front of that.
Thank you, Gabe. And I will mention that we we will be heavily watched as we endeavor going on this path. Uh Chair, I actually just got a text message from one of your constituents that's asking that they be part of the engagement. And so they are watching, they are listening. We just gotta make sure that we show up and that you let us know when are those meetings are going to be. And we'll make sure that we aim, argue with the correct information so that we can have a unified message. Rosie, any thoughts on your end?
Thank you, ACM Macias. Uh Chair, Board of County Commission, I appreciate the opportunity. And I think, and this is me directly speaking to city voters and others that may not be in the outer lane county. This is about regional vital conditions, so not just within um our county walls as a government center. But the message to me is that the city is doing a great job investing in a foundation. And there is now opportunity for us to create regional foundations. So this bond is going to prepare, kind of to me, in a sense, another phase two of comprehensional, comprehensive regional development strategy. And the other piece is when you look at this from an economic development perspective, we we are connected. This is workforce, um regional workforce access. This is um the effort to support business expansion and attraction. And we don't just all lie within the city proper. So we want to talk about this. There are opportunities for property values benefiting from a stronger regional reputation. Um we wanna talk about systems completion. We wanna talk about city plus county equals regional strength. And uh we're moving from one neighborhood to a region. This is what happens when there is a sense of community for all. And we also have urgency that we need to talk about these things. The federal infrastructure funding windows may close. They may shift. At Insight, we have seen um the rescindence and the rep publication of federal applications, especially for uh Department of Transportation and others that are very heavy in physical infrastructure. Construction costs will continue to rise, and so this is a window of opportunity for us. And and when, again, any of these vital conditions that are not met, there is a variety of threats that will predictably arise. So let's look at targeting the right voters. Um you know, there are business owners. They have regional operations. They there's healthcare professionals who serve countywide. I know our faith communities care about countywide congregations. And so we do have an opportunity to to talk um in in a different message instead of competing uh for resources. Let's let's think regional.
Thank you, Rosie. Chair and Commissioner Sanchez, any other questions or thoughts?
No, I I appreciate the comments. I just wanted to add one thing, and this was just from my community meeting we had in Rainy Springs last week, and I know Rosie was was there in attendance. Um the the one thing that stood out to me, and I thought it was one of the best questions asked because it became, it was around trying to get the full understanding of how the bond works and what we're trying to do here. Um I see a lot of, the reason I I wanna bring that up is because I see a lot on social media. There's a lot of lack of understanding of how government funding works and how we achieve projects. And, you know, we were trying to talk through how, when I was, I think when we, when I was trying to explain it and trying to figure out, I think it was a, that's the first time to be in public, trying to figure out how I message that out to my to my constituents, but um the question was, do you, are you, how are you doing on your budget and are you reliant on other elected officials? And the answer I gave was yes and no. Yeah, you know, when we look at our recurring funds of where we're at, I think we do, we're we're fine, we're steady, and we we've got that little bit of growth. But we've become very, we're where we're at to be able to bring projects to fruition, just like the first topic we talked about um today in the work session. We're reliant on legislators or the federal government for capital outlay and grants. And we've done such a good job of cobbling things together to be able to to bring these uh projects, whether it's community centers, flood control, roads, et cetera. Um but what we saw because the silver lining of COVID has been ARPA that gave us that tranche of forty million dollars. Um and what we've been able to do with that kind of investment in terms of being able to actually bring projects that have been um on our on our plans for decades almost to to fruition, that was a big, you know, for not just a game changer, but an eye-opener for me because of the fact that we were able to do that. And that's what I was trying to get across to my constituents is we can continue on, and yes, we'll continue to try to improve. But having this money will give us our first opportunity to do generational changes and set us up for the future at one time, over the next few years, over short term versus us continuing to have to cobble things together to get there over decade. So I I just, I just thought, like I said, it was one of those um lightbulb moments for me to hear a constituent ask that one question so that they could understand why are we asking for so much money and then to be able to explain that to them. So I I I'm excited. I think we're, as we start developing the strategy and working with um and moving forward with this, I I I do feel hopeful. I just also wanna be cautious in trying to make sure we're understanding the dynamics that we're pot- potentially going up against.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner Sanchez. So let me offer a couple of thoughts to that because uh my my memory tends to be long, uh but my days of sleep tend to be short. And so with that, I will say, here is what happened previously when we talked about that conversation about what other governmental entities we are dependent upon. It wasn't that long ago, about a year ago, that the governor, uh Governor Lujan Grisham, sent us a very stern message about stop asking, and she sent this message to all thirty-three counties in the state. Stop asking us to fund things at the state level when you have an ICIP list that is six billion dollars long that you're not able to take action on because they are ideating or stalling in the planning stage or in the design phase and start showing me some actual project that you can deliver on. So that end, it also came with a cautionary warning of, I can see your reserves when you submit your budgets and your financials. You need to start using some of those. And so the evolution of the conversation we're having today is just that when uh ACM Lopez was interim county manager, we had a very difficult discussion about how would and how can we present this to the community? Because we did go through some moments of austerity or leniency where we had to create those reserves, thanks to former county manager Macias, no relation. But in all of that, we had the opportunity now to craft what our future will look like. And I will say this, we will have to look at this from a very different perspective because we're not used to thinking about these kinds of projects from this. We have to be more united. We have to be more disciplined and also be okay and be able to say perhaps we need to, it looks like I lost audio, perhaps we need to pause in one area for the benefit of something that will bring um an o- an opportunity for the entire community. But that means that maybe we're playing more to our strengths in some areas. We're figuring out where we can put other things on external contracts so that we can let people excel at what they do best. The other thing, and I'm not gonna say that everybody needs to do this, but you are already seeing the fruits of some of the investments with our social media outreach and rethinking how we're engaging with the public. Just last week, after the question was posed, there was a um a a short video that talked about launching uh and actually moving on this momentum. I think in the future, we might call upon you to help us amplify those messages, and we can do little explainers. You already have people in the room that have taken the lead from that outside engagement, and they're doing things that are engaging with the people where they are on the platforms and also being able to use it as an educational moment, such as when we asked for uh feedback on a survey that was out there. Also sharing a little bit more about what action we took last week. And I know some of you in the room are also budding social media. Uh I guess posters or influencers of your own sorts. If you're gonna get on TikTok, let us know your handles and we'll make sure we can co-amplify the messaging so that everybody gets the the message. Yes, Commissioner Gremenos.
So I wanted to get back to what Commissioner Sanchez was saying about the voting aspect. Um and and this being um an off-year in a way. When I was campaigning last year, you know, there was such a low voter turnout when it was in the primaries. And I don't want that to happen because if it's a, that's kind of, I don't say it's an off-year, but I think like, you know, it's, a lot of people don't vote in the primaries. Um and and also because my understanding from what I was getting when I was talking to people for the general, um they didn't realize that they had a vote in the primaries. Uh so I was hoping that somehow we can get that message out, that it's then to emphasize that that they have to vote this year. Those that vote, vote. So that way they can um um go out and vote, obviously. But, you know, when they um go out, that we can have a message, obviously, for the go-bond throughout the county. You know, with all the information on the flyers and news and social media, just emphasizing that, you know, we need all county residents to come out and vote. That's what I would like to, uh uh you know, emphasize with that, with the voting capacity.
Chair and Commissioner Gremenos, I hear the the direction that you're asking for, and and I'm sure we will integrate that together with our outreach. May I also suggest that we don't have to go that far to look for experts. We have our very own deputy clerk, uh Deputy Clerk Zamora, who can, you can always reach out to. Uh currently, she's also traveling to Clovis. Or any of the staff that can help us figure out amplification and messaging. They currently maintain their own website. And I think there's an opportunity to be more strategic in how we go out and ask for the voter's support.
Yeah, something that I'd like to add and echo what Commissioner Sanchez said and also Rosalinda. This investment is not just for the county. Or when the investment is going to serve everyone in the community, especially in economic development and entertainment and access to resources throughout the whole county. And this is not just for the county residents. It's also for the residents of Las Cruces as well, and they're gonna benefit tremendously. So think of it this way, they they passed a couple of go-bonds in order to improve services and stuff in the city. Well, this is our opportunity to become a partner with them and actually expand those services out to the commu- to the outer communities and also to allow them to take advantage of it as well because they still are part of the county. And I think we need them to understand that. So that's why we need their vote and their support so we can actually become partners in this development and it's in um e- efforts in order to raise the level of the whole county.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioner Reynolds. And one other thing that I I'd be remiss if I didn't share that comes from the Budget Office in Lucio as well as Hilltop is that when we started thinking about this, there was intentionality to not asking for the full capacity. If I'm not mistaken, we're asking to closer to sixty percent. And so that should also be part of the narrative, and please take note of that as this comes up in your town meetings and your future discussion points.
Thank you. Um and just really quickly too, and I do have a constituent uh reaching out, actually a couple of them. So to Rosie and Sunny five oh five and everyone. So whenever we're starting the conversations about community engagement, the community narrative and how to engage in these conversations, one, to strengthen the fact that, you know, your voice is heard before you reach the ballot box, um which I think is a really important narrative that we've all been talking about um today. But if we could come up with like a community calendar um to kind of share with, you know, these conversations are happening here, then, and have this kind of planned out so that way, you know, yeah, maybe residents in La Mesa can't make a meeting in La Mesa or in San Miguel or or in Mesquita that day, but you know what? They're willing to come to the government center, or they're gonna go out to Hatch and grab a burger at Sparky's and have that community meeting or whatever it is, just so that we can really inform everyone in the community, including those in Las Cruces about when the meeting is, where it is, what the discussion topic is, um. I would love to share that as well on my socia's and kinda get that out there to where people know. Next steps and where they're at, so that's something that I would definitely ask.
Sure, I've, I've made a note about wanting a community calendar. I suspect depending on what ACM Lopez is already working on, that there might be some. Subsites or some microsites or what, some messaging that where, where we drive people to be able to see everything and anything that's going on related to this question. I think the other thing too that, that you remind me of is that we get so entrenched in our daily. Um, in, in our daily habits. We start the car or for those of you that drive EVs, you get in the car and it's ready to go and you just go back and forth to work. To drop off the kids at karate, to go back home and what have you. Start thinking outside of that because I think it would be great if you are inviting constituents outside of your community to come and see. Get that burger at Sparky's. Perhaps it can work with representation at the South Central Regional Transit District to be able to collaborate with them. For transportation needs for those that aren't able to get up there and in other areas. Cause I think once you start seeing. The immense, the existing natural potential we have in our community, this will be a, an easy question. I myself go and I bike ride at the Doniana Village exit, or I should say Doniana exit over nine and go by the cathedral. And there were people here at the county that showed and shared with me the beauty that is out there. I don't love the idea that there are rattlesnakes out there, but I love the fact that there is a natural thing to go out there. Which quite frankly is better than what you can get in the region and in near, the nearby state. And likewise, there are other amenities throughout the community. So something for us to think about, let's invite our neighbors. And, and put on display what we're proud of and be able to see how we're gonna give it some love through this bond.
I, Mr. Chairman, I think I, I like the idea of having those, you know, kinda points of where people are getting together, you know, I think like you said. That highlight like Sparky's, um, i- if you want, we can spend a, a Saturday evening at Chopes. Or the blue, you know, the blue moon. I mean, there's so many within our different districts. I think it'd be cool to figure out where people are and seeing how. You know, you can, I, I think the idea of not just um, being able to educate, but then make it into like. How do we bring focus to our small businesses? It's kind of a, a pretty fun idea.
I agree. I went to Casa El Camino for dinner the other night and I ate so much food that I, it was very painful driving home, I'm not gonna lie. So I invite you down there to come with me and experience the fullness. Cool. I ate so much, it was so good. Anyone else? Anything else for um, Rosie or Gabe online?
I was just gonna say, I um, I love the idea that what everyone's sharing. We're working on it in site. Something similar to a community calendar to present to the ACMs and the county manager. And a lot of the focus would be talking about daily content themes. So absolutely, we need to educate everyone before they go um, to the ballot box. And they're, the themes that we were looking at were tied about our connections, so that systems thinking that we are one county. And our investments, what have been our recent successes. Our future, looking at the forward-looking vision and then most importantly, our moment. So this is why I'm voting early, this is why I'm voting on election day and just. Uh, uh, looking at and uplifting all these different stories of diverse voice. On a multi-channel approach and platform strategy that we're, we were considering specifically for the, the strategic plan. So there's this wonderful moment and opportunity partner with Sunny five oh five and the county at large and other stewards as we call them. People in community that can carry on this daily conversation and create themes. Monday could be about. A business owner explaining regional workforce needs. Um, Friday is a farmer explain, explaining water infrastructure connections. So these are, this is the beauty of capturing these stories and this is our moment and this is our movement. And there can be no more exciting than opportunity than this.
Thank you Rosie, thank you Chair and thank you Commission for entrusting us with this monumental referendum.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, we do have two other items, um. The next one is the human remains found in the desert.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, Stephen Lopez, Assistant County Manager. And uh, we have less focused discussion on this topic. It's more an opportunity for you all. To uh, discuss ideas, ask questions for future discussion uh, and action. But uh, as you all are aware, there have been concerns since at least twenty twenty-two. Of a large number of migrant deaths in the southern portion of Doniana County. Primarily west of Santa Teresa. And uh, while the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Kim Stewart has presented to the board before. On the large number that were occurring in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Uh, since that time, the, I'm gonna call it the recent deaths that are encountered. Uh, seems to have gone down uh, quite a bit. But over the last couple of years, a number of human remains have been reported. Uh, in large part by one group called Battalion Search and Rescue. Uh, there has been uh, conflict uh, with that group, with OMI, with the Sheriff's Office. Um, and I'm not sure how much of this really is something that the county has the ability to control. We know that the governor's office has been contacted. Uh, we've reached out ourselves to the governor's office to see if the governor would be willing to form a task force. To look into this, we have not received a response so far. Um, the governor really is in a much better position to be able to uh, bring some resolution to this than the county is. Because the governor has access to the state police. Uh, she has access to search and rescue, which falls under state police. And she has control also over the office of the medical investigator. And uh, those are really the key players. State statute puts all human remains under the authority of the office of the medical investigator. Um, and as you all are aware, our sheriff's office uh, is. Rather limited in what they're able to just go out and do by walking around in the desert. That's not really their primary focus. Uh, there have been allegations that the sheriff's office has refused to go out and investigate. I will say that I personally, uh, over the last month have seen sheriff's office investigators down in that area. Investigating reports of human remains. Uh, I was there for completely unrelated reasons. Uh, working with Senator Heinrich's office on infrastructure, uh, funding possibilities. Uh, when we came across the sheriff's investigators. So I can, can affirm that they are out there uh, at, at least doing something. I don't know, you know, if they're able to get out on every single case. Uh, but again, we wanted to bring this forward to the board to see if you have any direction, any suggestions on where we go.
It's my understanding from conversation with the sheriff over the last seven years that they're the only organization that's actually, has the capability. And the expertise in actually investigating these deaths. And I'm not, I'm not aware of any other organizations such as the state police or border patrol or anybody else who actually has the capability to do this. Uh, not that I'm aware of.
Uh, I actually believe that Commissioner Reynolds is absolutely correct. I believe that it is. The sole responsibility of, of the sheriff's department to um, do that. But I was a part of a conversation yesterday that I just wanna kinda blanket statement, I don't know details, although I've asked. Um, I do know that Congressman Vasquez was in town. Last few days and I know that he did go down to the border region and there were conversations had kind of surrounding this topic. Um, so I think that as soon as we kinda get direction on how that conversation went. We can definitely report back and, and kinda strengthen the narrative of whatever that is. But I do know that he was down there, I do know that it was on his radar and I do know that conversations were had. Um. I have been in conversations and this has been brought up a couple of different times. I know that it's a really um, tragic and also very kinda. Specific um, topic and it's really hard to have in, in its conversation, but. I do agree with you, I think it is literally the sole responsibility through state. Stat, or not even state statute, it's probably done through New Mexico Constitution or um. Through state statute or one of the avenues that is the sheriff's sole responsibility in that area, so. But it is travesty, I think we need to learn and figure out what better avenues there are to kinda help with this. I'm not sure. I, I know that the current activity and um. It's the best way of putting it. Commissioner Sanchez, hold me out, the current, uh.
I, I'd say occupation, but.
Occupation, okay, we're gonna go with that. I was like, where do we wanna go with that conversation? Um, probably then puts it in the heart, hands of the. Right, say it's military. I mean, I don't really, I think that kinda brought up a whole nother aspect to this conversation that none of us are. Exactly prepared to have, um. Yeah.
Cause you don't, well, well, I think what you're getting at about maybe blunt is that we don't know the causes of the death, deaths. And they may be partly attributed to the fact that we have another air, another group down there working. And so for us to do the investigations, it's kind of stepping on their toes a little bit possibly. And also possibly causing some sort of confusion about who is responsible for it. And uh, so as long as we have additional occupation in that area along the border. It's difficult for anybody to say this is our job or your job or their job or their responsibility and. This is where the confusion and the conflict is coming, I think.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I think uh, and I, 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 Mr. Lopez, I wanna say, you know, one of the things, one of your hallmarks when you were at the OEM was that. You had open lines of communication with all parties, but especially had that established with El Paso County and um, CBP. Um, and now with a new entity down there. Um, and I know Mr. Masias has been working to try and connect us, but I think one of the challenges we have is that. Port Bliss, which is our local, um, you know, our local base, we'll call it local, I guess. Um, is only patrolling up to or stationed or responsible for their army base. Which is up to the Texas state line is my understanding. And then on the New Mexico side, it's Fort Huachuca. So I know. As Mr. Masias is trying to coordinate some level of, of discussion, but I think this has been the hallmark of this administration is. Lack of communication and so trying to understand. How, how it's done or how it's coordinated. I, I, other than that, I don't know, you know, what it is we can do. What, I guess for, I, I guess I'd almost have to open it up to, to the other commissioners or. Um, other electeds, including the sheriff or any other law enforcement for suggestions on what's a port.
So Mr. Chair, Commissioner Sanchez, Commissioner Reynolds, uh, eh, thank you very much for those comments and. Yes, I think that there are a lot of challenges. The uh, Roosevelt Reservation certainly has added a new twist. The sheriff mentioned a couple of commission meetings ago, uh, during her presentation. That uh, yes, the military police could be engaged in this, um. We have not made a hard effort at contacting the military to see what they wanted to do. Because we didn't wanna get ahead of this conversation with you. Um, Sheriff Stewart has pointed out in the past also. That there are federal laws that supersede our state statutes as it relates to human remains that are. Historical, uh, archaeological remains that have been out there for a hundred plus years. Um. And that especially when we're talking about BLM land. Uh, we do know through BLM that there are uh, ancient burial sites uh, in that area. And they do sometimes get disturbed by animals or, or by other means, weather for example. Um, and that creates a particular twist. And then the sheriff's office, eh, eh, the authority that uh, you were referring to for the sheriff's office to investigate. Um, the state police can also investigate uh, deaths. Uh, but you're right, it typically falls to the sheriff in unincorporated areas. But interestingly, the state statute uh, does not give the sheriff control over the remains, the remains themselves. Uh, are under the authority of the office of the medical investigator. So eh. I, I think we probably, i- i- if the commission is uh, amenable to this. We probably need to invite the appropriate stakeholders to the table and see. What they do need, just like you were indicating, uh, what efforts might be possible. Um, eh, that, it will obviously get very public very quickly, um, and. I- it's gonna be what it's gonna be. Hopefully all stakeholders will come to the table. Um, but uh, if that's the direction you would like, we can certainly start focusing that way.
I think we have to do something. I don't think we can just sit here and let things continue the way they are. I think we have to try to get stakeholders together so we can understand when each person fills their, their responsibility. And then to get a clear understanding of what are our responsibilities, what are our access.
And just one further, I think with the current. Occupation of our border region and what is going on nationally in that narrative, I think you're gonna have even more people. Willing to come to the table to understand what's going on, including, you know, Heinrich's office, Ben Ray's office, Vasquez's office. They're all gonna wanna come to the table and learn as well and have a very educated conversation about what's going on. I think it will definitely help the commission understand fully what's going on. We can even invite someone, Park Anthony to the table, um, community members when it's appropriate. To understand exactly what's going on down there. So I, I, I agree. I, I think that's a great first start. Step, start, great start.
Mr. Chair, I agree with that. Um, and then that would be great with a, you know, if state came down. Uh, you know, DASO, and the uh, military. And then creating a memorandum of understanding as to who does what in this situation, that would be great.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Chair Commissioners, uh. If I can assume for a moment and you can give me head nods. Uh, should we have the commissioner for that district be part of the discussion of the stakeholders group?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
We volunteer.
Thank you. I will take that volunteer.
All right, thank you very much. Awesome, thank you, Mr. Lopez. Okay, we do have one last topic on the agenda today, which is item number four. Which is the reappraisal um, conversation. We uh, have this on here because we've been talking during open meetings in the, in the BOCC chambers. About the Assessor's one percent fund. About coming forth with a resolution and a plan for the reappraisals of property within Doniana County. Um, what has been shared with the county commission in open session is that there's not been a proper reappraisal done in well over a decade. And we were hoping to have a conversation about where to go next, how to tackle this, what we kinda understand. Um. I'm not sure how this conversation is going to move forward today. If I can get some guidance.
Mr. Chair, uh, Commissioners, Stephen Lopez, Assistant County Manager. With the appraiser being uh, herself up in Clovis right now for the New Mexico Association of Counties Conference. Um, and not seeing anybody else from her office here. Um, I would recommend that we get direction from you as to what guidance we can provide her office as to exactly what you're looking for. I thought it was fairly clear from previous meetings. But uh, having not seen anything yet show up on uh, BOCC agenda. Uh, I'm happy to get what you've mentioned uh, and committed to writing if you can give me the high points.
Of course. So. I'm just one of the five commissioners that are participating in this conversation. But one of the things that happened, um. You know, just some background of where this came up and where we're at today and. Last year, we were given a presentation um, by the assessor on kind of. Moving forward, what's going on, where there was conversations on the misuse of the one percent fund. From the, from Adam Assessor, we had to have continual conversations. I know that finance was heavily involved. County management was heavily involved in that conversation, understanding where it was going, next steps. And kinda getting some guidelines. I know that DFA came into the conversation. Looked over all of our information here at the county in regards to the Assessor's one percent fund. And for anyone joining us online, the one percent fund is. A county designated fund for the assessor's office to do reappraisals. Um, that is the. Purpose of the one percent fund. And DFA came back and issued a, a s- And DFA came back and issued a a statement and a notice to the county. Stating that the one percent fund in Doniana County has been used appropriately. Okay, I'm getting a nod, so I'm not off base yet, um. So that kinda put into motion a more statewide narrative of the one percent fund during our. New Mexico Counties Meeting that some of this, some of the commission was at. The one percent fund, uh we had a joint meeting with the Commission Affiliate, the Assessor's Affiliate and the County Manager's Affiliate. We all got into a room and understood what the needs. For the state and DFA were when it came to the one percent fund and that is basically getting a. A report slash presentation on the plans from the Assessor's Office on what. The one percent fund was going to be used for. AKA reappraisal of properties in our county. And then at the end of that, to solidify it, it had to be presented to the board and the board had to. By majority approve the plan for the one percent fund for the reappraisal. Reappraisal. What am I looking for? What's the word, reappraisal?
Formerly submitted plan, Chair.
Thank you, wow, it took me a long time to figure out the word plant, guys. Um, that would be brought to us, we would vote on it by resolution because anything that is brought to the county. Commission that needs to be voted on, needs to be done by resolution or ordinance. And that's where we're at, we were hoping to get this done prior to submitting our preliminary budget. To the state of New Mexico. Um we are still within the window because our final budget is is being sent. In July to the state of New Mexico and I was hoping to have a resolution in front of us to vote on as a commission to approve. The Assessor's plans for the one percent fund for the re- reappraisal plan in Doniana County. Yes.
I'd like to point out that we did receive a. Someone of a plan, but it did not include any specifics about timing, resources, uh results. Expectations, uh conclusions, uh responsibilities, there were a lot of things missing in the plan that was provided. And I and I think what we're looking for is a plan that actually covers mo-. Almost all the aspects, including the timeline as to proposed results that we're expecting uh from this reappraisal. So I mean, year one, do we get, you know, ten percent, year two, do we get twenty percent, year three? I mean, how much can we actually accomplish with the reserves that we have, resources we have? And and what are the expectations this board can ha- can expect? Or what are the the results that this board can expect as part of that plan? So uh as we move forward and what I'd like to have from the Assessor is a good clear understanding of exactly. How they're planning to proceed, what their expectations are, what the results are and what we can expect as a board before we can approve this plan.
I I I think you hit that on the nail, Commissioner Reynolds, I think you're exactly right, we were given a plan or we were given a presentation. On the reappraisal plan for the ca- for the um the Assessor's Office. At the end of the presentation packet was a blank piece of paper that. Or a piece of paper that basically said Chair sign off and County Manager sign off if you agree. I made it, I made the observation, the statement that it needed to come before us in the form of a resolution. And I believe um at the last BOCC meeting last Tuesday. We did ask the Assessor if she has met with County Budget and County Finance. To go and County Legal to go over said plan to produce a resolution that would solidify her goals. And objectives in her reappraisal plan for her department. And I believe it was, she stated that um. She contacted County Budget that morning to start that conversation. So I believe with her just being out at the New Mexico Counties Meeting in Clovis. She um hopefully will get back to us on that so we can solidify any plans. I think that sums it up pretty well. Commissioners, any questions, comments, observations, goals, objectives? Snaps?
Mr. Chairman, I think with, I know some of the conversation we had with. Um I know it was with the Commissioner Gavero, it was, well, it was not Commissioner, was it with you? That we talked with Ruben? Okay, with the with the Deputy Assessor, um, I. I think one of the things that that I I just, I I hope as we, as they develop the plan, um. One of the comments that was made was that, oh, if we if we do this all internal, they're gonna hire and then once they do all the appraisal. The, you know, in person, that then they were gonna have to, uh, one, one, they were concerned about the pay or those positions, but the second was. They would have to let them go. At some point because they would run out and it never made sense to me where they would change, you know, I I understand having turnover. Um along with the fact that they they mentioned all the vacancies they have. But it would seem to me that the Assessor could potentially come up with a plan to do. Kind of hybrid and I think that was sort of pre- presented to us, but it almost seems like you could do. Over a five or six year period where you, by the by the time you're done. In that five or six years, you start the cycle again with what you did in year one and you continue on, so it's just a continuous process of reappraisal, it doesn't have to. I I don't know the state statutes or the requirements for the Assessor, um and when they have to, you know. Uh be in person, but at least if if they uh uh reappraised in person. Every five to six years, that would be a step ahead of where we're at now. And um understanding clearly that this is not, this is not specific to. Our our current current uh Assessor, but this is something that's been ongoing over several of of those that have helped. Several of those that have held the job, so um we're we're just where we're at now and so I think for, we'll see what the plan does, but I. I would think it it would make a lot more sense of how we budgeted out over X amount of years, I think Commissioner Gavero said even shared that. Uh as well with um Deputy Assessor. Uh Reyes, but you're just making sure we're, you know, there there's a, there's a plan on how to, on how they're gonna execute, but. I think once we have that plan, we can figure out how it's funded, if that's the one percent or wherever else we need to. But it'll be dependent on them presenting a plan, a plan to us.
Yeah, and I I think that's exactly right, Commissioner. What what I would definitely ask in with our two ACMs here today is that if we can please. Work best with Madame Assessor and her staff to get this done appropriately, if there's resources. Such as, I know that she's been focusing, as Commissioner Sanchez said, on staffing up, filling those vacant roles to get her where she needs to be. But. Our first meeting in July, if we can please put this on the agenda. To formalize this plan and or to give a update to the Commission on where the plan is. The, I think the biggest thing and I know Commissioner Reynolds and I have both kinda said this in meetings, probably within the last two years. Especially now that we have an economist, um. Being contracted with the county, we're s- we're seeing GRT go up. We're seeing home prices go up, we're seeing all these things go up. But our reappraisals here at the county are flatlined, year after year after, since I've been on this board. And and it's concerning not only because. Well, it's concerning because the county government and a municipal government should not be. Should not have more GRT coming into the county revenues and into the coffers to pay for roads and infrastructure. Than property evaluations. So property evaluations, nine times out of ten should outweigh GRT. For what is coming into to a county government, so. We need to kinda write that sooner than later, so I'm hoping that, you know, we can get. County staff to start working even better than we already have, I know that. Budget and legal have been working on that, but I think we need to put a little more time and energy into this. Commissioners, any other thoughts or comments?
Thank you very much, that gives us some direction and we will certainly reach out. To the Assessor and Deputy Assessor with offers of support and uh. Some bullet points of things that they need to make sure they include in their plan. And an offer to help them write the plan or find uh samples from other counties that they might be able to utilize.
Thank you. Okay, anything else Commissioners, any follow ups?
Okay, thank you staff for getting this done and doing it live stream, this was awesome, I know this was our first. First time doing it, but. It worked out. There's a lot of equipment in this corner.
And and for everyone who attended uh virtually, thank you very much, we really appreciate your uh reaching out to uh join us.
I know this was like a last minute, like let's live stream, but thank you, we're learning as we go. So I appreciate you all, I appreciate you guys for helping out with this. Oh, it is ten fifty-six and we are officially adjourned from our work session today.